Folks, to get started, before I ask for adoption of the agenda, Mayor Ives is away and as acting mayor for September, I'll be chairing the meeting today, and I appreciate your patience with me. We have no delegations today, but I'll ask for the adoption of the agenda.
Move, second.
Thank you. No delegations today, no minutes of meetings to accept, so we move right to department reports at our committee of the whole meeting. I'll start with the second quarter financial statement report.
Move, proceed, second.
And any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor? Thank you, Donald, for your work there. Public Works Capital operational status?
Move, proceed, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That pause between any discussion and all those in favor is a chance for you to second fight.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Parks and Building Maintenance Department?
Move, proceed, second.
Any discussion? Question, Councilor Grant?
One question for our Parks, that's not really about Parks, it's more about development and landscaping, and since we've had drought condition a couple of times in the last five years, I'm wondering if we're reviewing our landscaping needs that we're giving developers and trying to look for things that are maybe more appropriate for a new climate?
Absolutely, we are. We're looking at it not only at an internal operational level, but also trying to work with the planning department when we're going into future development projects, to try to formulate a message out there that will help steer the development community or advise the, help the development community to a certain degree, and the design community out there of the, what I'll call, the new trend of drought tolerant plant selection, and trying to implement some of the, what I'll call, best management practices that are, that revolve around drought tolerance and water wise and water conservation. We're not only going to be looking at plant material, but we're also going to be looking at irrigation systems, trying to come up with creative ways to not only reduce water, but ensure that when water is being used, it's being used to the best, you know, to the best degree of benefit for the, for the landscape that's being proposed. Micro drip irrigation, sensible smart controls, all these kinds of things are now at the forefront, I think, in everybody's minds, development community, and certainly at the staff level and also at a retail level to that, to that end as well. So, we're in the infant stages, this is probably the hardest we've been hit in certainly the 30 years that I've been around the town, and we'll make every effort to ensure that we keep the lines of communication open with our development community and help them up to the best of our abilities.
Thank you.
Command the Parks Department for doing that, and I'm sure you'll keep us posted with any changes or any initiatives that are being done. Okay, moving on.
I just had a question.
Question, yes.
Yes. The 2015 nuisance mosquito monitoring program, I've heard anecdotally it's been a good year, so have you had any feedback and will we need to do anything next year?
It sounds highly unlikely that we'll have to do anything next year. All of the field data has been submitted and compiled, and we've done follow-up with a number of the residents in both the Kai Bay and the Wireless Road, and in the farm community, Bob Seifert's farm in particular, and there has been zero reports of any activity, of any mosquito activity in the area. This drought has certainly helped in that regard, and it's probably the only thing that, that the droughts can take a positive out of it, that was one of them. We're really, really quite confident that addressing the problem the way that we did was very effective, and Catherine Jolly, who is one of our, I'll call her, community organizer in the area, she sent me an email about two weeks ago and said that everything's just great out there now, so it worked.
And there's no concern that water could again collect in the Kai Bay area? That was the main feeling round, I understand.
It's unlikely. Unless something, unless there's, I mean, something really unusual, we're pretty confident that we've got it. So, we'll keep an eye on it as, over time, to make sure that that slew, for no other term, doesn't reinvent itself.
Thank you.
I'm sure I can speak on council, that many have heard from residents with some of their stories, very pleased with the results, but also commended the Parks Department for calling that meeting way back in the spring, early spring, at the rec center, for residents to inform them all this being done. So, kudos to you, and we'll knock on wood that the mosquitoes choose another location. The Recreation Department report, or your report here?
Move, proceed, second.
And Counselor Grant?
No, I just, I didn't think we had voted on the Parks one.
Thank you.
I think we missed that, so.
All those in favor of the Parks report being received now?
There we go. Then we'll move, proceed, to the Recreation Department.
Are there any questions in regards to that report?
I was just going to say kudos that keeps, our staff keep on expanding and keeping enough attractions to keep it fresh and interesting, and keeping the attendance increasing, so it's a success story all around.
Thank you for that, Counselor Grant.
I'll second that one, for sure. And in addition, though, Mandy, I can't wait to see you. There you are. Having had an experience with Karen and wheelchairs and trying to maneuver wheelchairs, I have a whole new respect and admiration for people who in fact are, have disabilities. So, when I saw your report about the I Can Shine program, I was wondering how that was received, and was it received in such a way that you would be repeating it again? Can you give me some background?
This is the second time that we've targeted I Can Shine, and we do plan, we even future. It has been well received. They have about 20 children out there, so that's a considerable amount considering the group that it's targeted for. But we're well in the pipeline now, there's a lot of questions in the public, which is really nice to see. So, yes, it's, we've had an engine.
Wow. Good idea. Thank you.
Any other questions for our Recreation Director? Oh, I have a motion to receive the report.
So, move.
All those in favor? By Law Enforcement report?
Move, proceed, second.
And any questions for Shelley here, who answering, I understand? No? All those in favor of receiving the report?
Fire.
Thank you. Any Fire Department report?
Move, proceed, second.
Any questions or comments, Counselor Grant?
Well, I guess we, we all take our hats off to the Fire Department on a regular basis, obviously, and they look after us so well, but from a more personal point of view, there was a fire in the northeast woods, and if it hadn't been for the fact that we have a very, very diligent Fire Department, that fire could have spread all the way down to my home as well as everyone else's. And so, I saw in Gord's report, what did he say, how proud he was of the education and prevention of that Fire Department, and I have to say, we're very proud too and very grateful. It was, it was handled extremely well.
Well said, I'm sure that goes to council members. Also, they've lost members, but I understand that they've got some replacement volunteers that have stepped up to the plate in our community, and we're very thankful for that, and for the direction and leadership that our Fire Department chose. So, all those in favor of receiving the report? Planning and Building Department?
Move, proceed, second.
Any questions for Margaret? Counselor Grant, you're on a roll.
I am. Never had it so good. Cambridge Heights, I guess for you, that's all I need to ask. Where, where is it at right now, Margaret?
So, we do, the consultant, the developers' consultant is still working on the Phase Three Stormwater Management Plan. So, really, we're waiting to receive that in final draft form and review that, and once we have that, then we can further action the development and designing applications we have in that area, and start moving those forwards in conjunction with the final stages of the Stormwater Management Plan in terms of getting that to council and to vote.
Any kind of timeframe?
Be able to provide that once we get that final draft.
They're having a suggestion of October, when, when they made their presentation, do you think it'll be able to fit within that, Grant?
Um, no.
No.
The, we're still waiting for the final of the Phase Three, so the idea would be to find out what the Phase Three document has, get that in front of council, make sure council's comfortable with that, and then we would have to address the issue of, do we go to the public as envisioned in the original timeline, process for the Stormwater Management Plan, before moving forward with certain features of the Stormwater Management Plan, or do we start working concurrently, same time of that information going forward to the public, start working on actual applications and start applying it? So, that issue still has to be resolved.
Thank you.
Counselor Kendra?
And the delay on that is on the developer's side, I would assume, not, we're not holding it up, they, they haven't got you the information yet.
Correct.
The other, the other thing that I'm, that I've run into a few times, I don't know if the rest have or not, but because we've sort of changed the way we do things and we're, having the developers go up to the public prior to submitting applications or getting any work done at town, the only one comes to mind as, there it is in the front page of the newspaper, I don't know anything about it. I had the same experience on Backroad, where the people phoned me up wanting to know all about this, I'd never seen it, and yet they've had a letter and a meeting with the developer, and so, I get why we're doing that piece of the process, but I just think that we should kind of keep an eye on that, because it's really tough when they phone you and they want, they want to sit down and talk to you, you don't have any information because they haven't made an application yet, and yet the developer's been out in the neighborhood. Now, I get why we're doing that, but it's, it makes it a little more difficult on us, so I just throw that out there as, yeah, something, I don't know if there's a way to deal with that or not, but it's just, it's, you know, it's, it's tough to answer, to talk to them.
I think that part of this is as people are getting more comfortable with the process, I mean, the pre-application consultations were in direct response to comments from residents as to not having an input into the process until the deal's done. And so, really, this is designed that prior to them even finalizing and submitting an application, they're getting the comments from the public, which inherently means, one, it hasn't gone to council, it hasn't gone to staff, and two, that things can be changed. So, the applicant hasn't finalized their proposal, and they're not supposed to, until they've received all the comments and processed that public information and accommodated what features they can. So, in short, members of the public going to council, asking for what council thinks of it, or what an implication of a certain feature, is quite premature, because that feature that they're concerned with, if they do raise that to the developer, may not be actually even form part of their application, or how it's being addressed may be addressed differently when the application actually comes in.
But they continue to phone and say, what's, what's my opinion, why? I haven't even seen it, how can you not know? I mean, you know, and it's like, you gotta be stupid because you don't know, well, that's the new process, right?
Right, and it's directly because that's what the public has said, I mean, I, I agree.
I get, I get what you're saying, I'm just saying, there's another side of it here.
I've also gotten from members of the public the same sort of comments in terms of, why should we bother showing up at the pre-application consultation, because everything's already been decided? And my only response is that we can't get any further forward in the application process before we even apply or do a drawing. So, I really think that as this rolls out more, and we will become a little more aware of it, and that this isn't a public hearing, there, there is no application, that that will start to drop off the table.
Well, just, just so, I just, I'd like it to be a monitor and just see if there's some way we could maybe come up with something if it continues.
Before I move to Counselor Arnett and Counselor Swit, it was good intentions to have it moved earlier, so that, as you suggested, that some changes could be looked at and contemplated by developers. As far as council being in the loop there, say, CEO, what's, what's your thoughts on that before, when it's in the initial stages at that, that point?
Well, the only real way council can, can receive that information is by presenting it at a council meeting, then this group acknowledges that, that there's, you know, that potential application existence, and that's what we're, we're trying to avoid. So, just, just thinking here on the spot, one of the options may be that we provide you, as, as a pre-application process, when the developer invites the community to a meeting to discuss what they're thinking of doing, we can ensure that you get copies of that information. Not that you attend, but at least, at least you'll know something's in the works, and you then can acknowledge, or you can ask staff for, you know, need a calls notes version of what's happening in that area, and we can do our best to provide that. Because quite often, we don't know what they're proposing either, right? That's, that's the intent of this process, is to go to the public early and get their initial feedback on that.
That would certainly work for me, just so I have something.
Yeah, but we'll throw, we'll throw around some ideas at staff levels, see if we can do them before you.
That would be good.
You could report back to us the next council meeting. I had Counselor Arnot, Counselor Price, and I said, split the pick in that order.
Sure, and I just wanted to support Counselor Grant on that, because I read him on in the paper, and, oh, that's interesting, but I guess it piggybacked on the recent approval of the LARN, and then people were saying, oh, now, now that we've given them five stories, now we're going to six stories, but I didn't have any information on it, so I think what the CIO was proposing, something would be, would be better for, for us to have a little bit of knowledge of it before it went out into the paper.
Acknowledged, Counselor.
Yes, and I look forward to that report, and I'm glad Counselor Grant raised it, because it is difficult when people phone you and you actually don't know anything about it. Or I heard rumors about what you can say. So, if we could have some structure by which we could be given a heads up, that an application, even, you know, potentially 18 units or potentially three, or we don't know at this stage, as much information as we know to us, and I think the next step I'd like to see us look into, because what often happens too, the application comes in, and then it may be months and months and months, a year, before it actually comes to the table, and, and I appreciate a lot of work happens on it, but then what happens is that it's, it's much harder to make changes too, because it's, you know, in the design and it's all drawn up. So, if there's some way that applications that are actually formally received, we get some heads up, there's some process by which, and maybe it's just an initial presentation, we receive this application, we're working with the developer, are there any suggestions? And we may have some suggestions too, have they considered a pathway through? So, rather than then spending three, six months a year with the planner and then have us say something, so if we could look at some process, I would feel more comfortable in that.
Thank you for that, Counselor Swit, do you have anything there?
Well, just, I guess in this pre-consultate, or this pre-permit application session, any feedback the developer would get would be between the developer and the public. We wouldn't necessarily have that information, except for, so if they were having a conversation or had written a letter to the developer, we wouldn't necessarily be prepared to.
Yes, we would. Required any written correspondence, any, any response, any comment sheets, they're required to make a copy of that, and include that in their application, and also as part of their application, they're required to provide a summary of the issues, and how they need to accommodate them, or why they have to accommodate them.
So, we were in that chamber?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so before moving on then, it was with good intentions that the changes were made with Planning Department, and now I think we'll wait to hear back from, from our staff in regards to that, I'm locating some information of the process as well.
Were you the motion, or?
I'll report back, we're the committee of the whole, I think we have been in our stamp, you're getting back to us. So, I'll ask, no, any other questions in regards to the Planning and Building Department report?
Just one thing, it does look like we are seeing a change happening with the increasing value of building permits, it looks like that lull we went into is, we're coming out of, it's been quite a big blow over the last three years.
So, all those in favor of receiving the report? And Carrie? So, moving to Staff Report, so permissive tax exemptions for 2016?
I would move first, second, and third reading, do we need to add the, you sent a new piece, a late piece to that, did we not?
If you updated your agenda, the updated agenda has a report that includes the tennis courts, the tennis clubhouse.
So, that's included in the late package that we should have received? Did everybody receive that? That's true.
Perhaps, Donald, or Director of Finance, can you just provide a quick summary as what the tennis club issue is about?
Sure. Before I do that, I'll start off by saying that we grant permissive exemptions annually, it's a bylaw that council has to adopt. We provide various exemptions for various nonprofit groups. One of the quirks of the Assessment Act is that if anyone occupies crown property or municipal property, they're assessed and taxed as if they own the property freely. So, that would, in the absence of a permissive tax exemption bylaw, make the Comox seniors taxable because they occupied the Stair Center. It would make parallelous and the Comox Archives and Museum Society taxable because they occupied portion of the building at 1729 Comox Avenue. So, we go, in addition to providing B.C. Assessment with the permissive exemption bylaw every year, they also ask us who occupies your property, and we provide them with a list. And because of an oversight, I don't normally deal with the tennis club. In past years, I overlooked them, and so they've never been reported to B.C. Assessment, even though they've occupied the top floor of the tennis clubhouse, which is a small building at, at Anderton Park, they've occupied it for years, but somehow we've always overlooked reporting them. So, this year we've reported them, but we don't necessarily want them to become taxable, paying taxes that they never had to pay before. So, this year's permissive tax exemption bylaw includes a permissive exemption for their portion of the assessment that arises from occupying the top floor of that building.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, and we'll need a motion, sir.
So, I would move first, second, and third reading, including the tennis court.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on?
I just had one question, the Little Red Church, I know in the past we looked at how they could get tax exemption, was that for work that they did?
They haven't actually done any heritage restoration, and to complicate the issue, it's owned not by a society, but by a person, and we are limited to providing exemptions to nonprofit organizations generally. So, if it had been purchased, and we worked through this with the owner, she understood the, the parameters. Now, we can also grant heritage exemptions, that's different from the permissive exemptions, but she would have to do heritage restorations, and there would be, we talked about several years ago, developing standards and rules in application with all rest, she hasn't reached the point where she's ready to do that yet.
Thank you.
And Donald, just to clarify for citizens as well, should the Little Red Church have a religious denomination rent their facility, would that change their status as far as being able to apply for, for, for this exemption?
It could. It would kind of depend on what the arrangement was.
So, we can direct that person to speak to you if they had that, an idea like that.
She and I have talked about that, actually.
Thank you. Any other questions in regards to?
Just one last question on the Red Church, if it was a heritage building, if she was willing to have it designated as a heritage building, would that make any difference to the tax exemption?
Wouldn't make any difference to this tax exemption, but council could give it a heritage tax exemption.
Okay.
Okay, but then the question is, what's the money being used for? Is there, is there, when we previously discussed heritage exemptions, the idea would be that the owner would develop a plan, and that the tax savings would be applied to heritage restorations, or to offset the costs that were being incurred to restore the building to heritage quality, right? And so, without the plan, without the expenditures, it probably wouldn't be advisable to grant a heritage exemption.
So, we have a motion on the floor then, to support permissive tax exemptions for 215, 216, that are listed here, and in addition, the tennis club. All those in favor? Yes, Carrie. Okay, and the next item is reserved for policing and emergencies, and I'm going to turn over to our CIO to do a brief explanation in regards to that, if you may.
You could hit I for me.
So, basically, we're looking at the reserve for policing and emergencies, and that staff be authorized to draft the bylaw in that regard, that would establish a reserve fund.
Yeah, and as Director of Finance's report points out, this kind of started out when I had met with Inspector Walton from the S C N P, who came up with the suggestion that we should consider such a reserve in, that if, you know, unforeseen circumstances happen and there's a tragic event that involved a high level of requirement of policing, specialized policing, it could set us back a significant amount of money, because those costs would be a portion to the town directly. And so, essentially, what you have here is the establishment of a loss insurance fund, should such an event occur in the town, and that we would be responsible for those costs. And Don has come up with a system, applying part of our annual surplus to this fund, that we consider on an annual basis, would be essentially a minimal impact to the tax bill.
So, sad example of that would be a murder investigation.
Correct.
And sad if you had one in the valley, but if it was in Comox, what you're saying then is that the town of Comox would have to incur the additional cost of policing?
Yes.
So, this would act as an insurance thing in that regard. Counselor Grant?
Would this, I read this report, and I just wanted to clarify that we're going to get bumped up to 90% of policing costs here, probably at the next census, or if not the one after that, does this give us a bit of a head start on that too?
Yes.
Funds away for?
We could, you could use this money to offset some of the costs, once our population hits over the magic 15,000 level.
And is this going to have any effect on our budget? I know, I'm like, I know that in years past, sometimes when we've run into little issues with the budget, one of the areas that we always kind of had a little extra in was policing because of the way that system works. Are we still going to have some money in there for, for that kind of thing, or maybe a bit there?
The Director of Finance is projecting we will have a surplus this year, barring any unforeseen circumstances between now and the end of the year. So, there is a potential to make a contribution this year. Now, council has that ability to make the determination every year as to what to do with surplus, and that's, you know, we're proposing that this would happen on an annual basis.
So, okay, would it be reviewed annually?
Correct.
Okay. Director of Finance, anything else to add? Director of Finance, anything else to add, or have you heard? So at this point, we're asking then, Counselor.
It seems to me, it was when that, that Pictet issue was going on, over on the mainland, and then at the same time, there was different communities that were looking at opting out of the provincial policing that we had, and then there was something to do with this, a police officer friend of mine said to me that if, if a community opts out of the, of the policing structure of the RCMP, they would have been on the hook for, say, all that DNA testing, which was millions and millions of dollars. So it was a good reason why we should be having local, you know, RCMP detachments govern us for it. So you're saying, or Director of Finance or Tim Walton is saying, that if there was an issue here, that if we had an unfortunate event happen, that we would be on the hook for more? Like if, I don't know what a murder investigation costs, but I kind of find that hard to believe, that if there is a murder here, that we would be charged more than, what, salaries, or?
Counselor Arnett, you let the Director of Finance answer that?
We, we are billed for regular time, for a specific number of officers, plus overtime, plus accommodation costs. So it's the overtime, potentially, where we could face additional costs.
And is this in a policy somewhere? Like, or is this just somebody saying to somebody, this is what I think we could do? You know, I just, I, I'd like to see something where it says this. I mean, it's good that we have a reserve, I agree, but, you know, the analogy at the beginning, if there's a murder, we could be on the hook for those costs. I don't know about that. So if, yeah, if we've got something other than, yeah, I think this is what we should do, because I heard this and that, then yeah, but maybe we need a little bit more information with this.
CEO? Well, one of the options is to just hold on making the recommendation, inviting the inspector to a committee meeting, and have him speak to, you know, provide a general update, as well as speak to this issue directly.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't seen him here for the almost year.
He'd be due for, for a meeting with us, I think, in October.
Yeah, yeah. And it just, you know, this, this comparison that had just came to me as we were talking, because I know I had this conversation with an RCMP member a number of years ago, and that's why I thought, because we were solidly entrenched with having the RCMP here, that we would have these type of issues.
And you're correct. As an example, if, if a police, RCMP police cruiser is demolished in Quinell, Quinell isn't paying for that car, it's everybody who contributes to that.
Right.
That pool of funds. So we get, we get a small, small increase. Don, you're shaking your head. And Don?
I, I think Quinell might be a bad example.
Because they're too smaller.
Because they're over 15,000.
Oh, okay.
So, so.
But I meant, I meant as a mother father.
The communities, the communities, there are two billing systems federally, okay? So there's one system for communities over 50,000, or over 15,000, and you pay 90%, and you pay all of your actual costs. Certain costs are pooled amongst the communities that are under 15,000. And you picked a specific example of a cruiser, and so vehicles are pooled among the communities under 15,000. So we would share the cost of a, if a cruiser is written off in any of our communities, we would all share in that cost. My understanding, though, is if the detachment has to bring in extra officers to deal with an issue, that we're on the hook. That's what I understand, as opposed to the situation for equipment and, and vehicles.
So it gets to my point, that we're not 100% sure of why we're doing this, so let's get a little bit more information.
Counselor Price and Counselor Grant.
Yeah, and I appreciate you raising this issue, and I think it would be good to, to have more dialogue, because I was in the impression that we were a blended police force in the Comox Valley, that we joined our resources, we get the rural areas and municipalities, and we blended our resources to create the Comox Valley detachment. So it seems like a murky area, like, do they, anyway, it would be good to have those questions answered.
Counselor Grant, anything to add?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I, I guess we need to get some clarification on that, but I think in light of the fact that we're so close to the 15,000, and that we're going to get an increase in our, in our budget anyway, if we don't put some capital or some reserves away for that time, we're just going to have to tax people for it. So it seems to me like having this reserve fund is likely something we're going to need anyway. I don't mind waiting for the, to hear from the inspector on just the technicalities of how that works, but I think that we need to be thinking towards the 15,000 number and putting some bucks away for that anyway, so.
Okay, enough discussion on that. I think it's good intentions with staff looking ahead, and no one disagrees with that. So, CIO will ask then to invite the inspector to come and speak to councilmen on this next report, and, and after that, we'll look at considering authorizing a draft.
Another, another option here is to proceed with the recommendation, and let this bylaw sit at third reading, until the inspector comes, and if you're not comfortable with moving forward on the bylaw, you let it die on the table, or make amendments to it, or what you wish.
Okay, but our motion says to authorize to draft a bylaw, so.
Correct.
So we would move, what, first, second, first and second reading?
No, you, all you're doing is moving the recommendation to draft the bylaw and give it three readings. The three readings wouldn't occur until council next week.
Fair enough.
As, as the earliest.
But how do we, how do we draft the bylaw that we're not 100% sure? Because you think one thing, Don thinks the other thing, so, you know, do we not want to be clear on what we're drafting first?
Well, the purposes, the purposes of the reserve fund are established quite broadly.
Okay.
I guess that, that would be the short answer, in terms of how you could use those funds. I mean, we're using the RCMP as one example. I, I think the way that we've got our thinking for drafting the bylaws, also to include it for, should there be a disaster of some kind in the community, we would be able to use those funds for something other than a terrible RCMP investigation.
The recommendation, the recommendation says policing, public safety, emergency, and disaster response and recovery.
I think, I think we have ourselves covered if we will, and if we save it for third reading, and we're not happy with it, and we can, and we can defeat the, the bylaw there. So, all those in favor of drafting a bylaw, going to third reading?
Can, can we move the recommendation?
Yeah. That's what we just ordered.
Yeah, just when the recommendation was proposed.
But we're still bringing in the super.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, I moved the recommendation.
Okay, all clear on that? Let's move on now. Whoa, here's something related to crime, the National Crime Severity Index, 2010 to 2014.
Move proceed.
And I'll just tell our CIO, make a brief comment on that if we can, and then open to discussion and questions if needed.
So give them a conversation on the last item. One may wonder why we leave a reserve for something like this, but it's maybe given our crime stats are so low. One may argue that we're due for an event. Another may argue that Comox is a great place to live, and we'll be seeing more people. And I think this has been acknowledged in some publications, as why Comox is such a desirable place to live in Canada, because of our low crime rates. It's just an item for, for council's information that we wanted to put on the agenda, and let you know that we're doing all right when it comes to people following the rules.
It's great news, but that could change tomorrow, unfortunately, so we're happy that it's there. So, any other questions in that regard? All those in favor? Correspondents? We have two items of correspondence. First is from the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, and the new building can have a fund?
I would move proceed, and then we'd be prepared to apply for the second intake when it comes.
Second.
We have a second there, all those in favor? Any discussion necessary?
I just had a quick question. Are there any other funds that we could look to for a grant? Because it's, was it 1.6 million that we need? It's a heck of a lot of money that we have to pay for ourselves.
Well, what are the optional sources of funding, should Lazlo Road actually get washed today in a storm, is disaster relief funding for the province?
Emergency one.
Which ironically is going to cost, you know, the province potentially and the feds more money than if they would consider this grant opportunity, which we are willing to contribute to as well. So as I had mentioned briefly to, to Counselor McKinnon the other day, that this item would be a good one for those that are attending UBCM, that if you do happen to see the Minister of Highways walking in the hallways, to talk to him about, and, you know, in a polite way, but get it back on the radar, that this is a high priority item.
I think it was their road until relatively recently.
Yes.
Took it out their hands.
Yes. So, you know, that is, it's a very robust application, I think is the term that I used. Shelley and Don did a great job on, on putting that together. It's shelf-ready in terms of the next intake for, for grant applications, and we will be looking out for that as well. But any chance we can get to talk it up is, is another recommendation as well.
So you're suggesting we accost the minister hourly at UBCM, and admit to that? No, we'll take that advice, and if there is opportunities, we'll, we'll make sure that people approach the minister and give information on something that's sadly needed in this country. So, we move proceed, any other discussion? Last bit of correspondence.
All those in favor?
The letter from the Express Taxi, an application for passenger transportation?
Move proceed.
Second.
Any discussion in that regard?
I'm just wondering, when taxi applications come, we seem to, I mean, lots of businesses come, we don't get any. Why taxis? Why, why do we hear about taxis when they come from the staff?
There's a, there's a process in the application itself, where they invite comment from the local governments.
Oh, okay.
And that's why we bring it forward for council's consideration. You can provide comment, you can leave it at receipt, if that's all you wish. It's up completely to council.
Yes, really, we can support, not support, or just receive. So we move proceed? Any other discussion in that regard?
Is there any reason why we wouldn't approve? Is there?
Well, that's, that was why I was asking. I don't know why we would or wouldn't.
So, I'm not going to comment on that? Unless the applicant asks us for a written letter of support, we just receive this? And that's it?
Yeah, and, and I think what, what goes back is that it was presented to Comox Council at such and such a date, and there was no comments received, right? It was just received for information, so it's neither positive nor negative, it's just, you've received the information, and that's where you stand.
So heading through then, the conversation there, is it, is it council's place to, to support our, or not support a, a business application, is basically what you're asking in this case?
Essentially, yes.
We've moved proceed of letter, unless there's other, other discussion or a motion made, that's what we're going to do. So, what's a bowl on that? Move proceed? Carry it. I believe we're getting close to the end here, folks, so. But before we do, ask for adjournment, just a reminder, the open house tonight, next door at the Stair Center, for the marine revitalization project, open house for the public, and I know we're all welcome to attend that from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. So I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
All those in favor? Thank you for your patience.